The council meeting will be called to order. It is now 5:30. There are five people present. Under the new law, the mayor can make the quorum. So there is a quorum present. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm the one.
Here.
I'm the agent.
Here.
I'm the staff.
Here.
I'm the walker.
Present.
I'm the boy.
Yes.
I'm the brown.
Here.
I'm the bag.
Here.
Each of you, each person has a copy of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
Aho.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes.
Any discussion? With no discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. The minutes approved. Okay, we will have committee reports as follows. Tonight, ordinances and resolutions will be given by Alderman Bill Brummett.
Yes, Mayor. The last resolutions committee made prior to the meeting. Items one through four will be read. The second will be given their second reading. Items five and six will be read one time and sent to the planning and development committee. And we will complete items seven through thirteen. And that completes the ordinance resolutions committee.
Ways and Means, Alderman Bill Brummett.
Yes, ma'am. We have a budget adjustment that's in effect concerning retirement of an employee in the cemetery department with ninety days of cumulative sick leave and forty-five days of vacation pay. The total is fifteen thousand, five hundred seventy-three eighty-three. It comes from salaries within that cemetery's budget. And we will accept this budget adjustment from the cemetery department. Second.
No, a motion and a second to accept a budget adjustment relating to retirement from the cemetery department. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. The budget adjustment passes.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes. Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills of the city. Any discussion? With no discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. The bills will be paid. Economic and Community Development. Economic and Community Development, Alderman Walker.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We did not have a meeting, but we are going to, I'm going to pull, wait, which resolution is it? Number eleven in reference to the Chodo Fund. I'm going to pull this until next time. Send it back to the committee.
Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Mays.
And Madam Mayor, the aid and council. I just want to ask again for some help with this dumping in the fourth ward. I want a short third in him. Look, I need you all to help me with this, if you don't mind. I mean, this, these problems can be fixed. Once we clean it up, they come right back in to dump again. I mean, just constantly. And wrong and verges, they dump tires, and couches, beds, refrigerators. I mean, I know this can be fixed. We're doing the best we can over there to get some help trying to combat it. Because you've got churches over there, you've got different programs, and schools, and people be coming from all over town, or the state, in the areas. Just asking for you all to input. And I did, that's all. And if anyone in the fourth ward of the city of Pineville needs their ditch cleaned out, call the street department, 543-5101. Some of this is really to be cleaned out, as part of our committee report as for public health and welfare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Alderman Boyd.
Now, I don't have a report, but I want to get with the committee to schedule a meeting for next week. I think Ms. Parker from Parks and Bricks has something they want to present to the committee. So I'll contact the committee between then and today. Sketch it. So next week.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Development and Planning, Alderman Steps, Chair.
I don't have a report, Madam Mayor, but we will be meeting Tuesday at ten o'clock.
Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown, Chairman.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Administration, Alderman Easterly.
No report, Mayor.
Public Safety. Public Safety report will not be given. However, we have handouts from each department, reports. That's basically my, that's my committee, but the report will not be given tonight. We have, you have the monthly reports from each department. So I would not belabor the time in doing that because we have something else that we have added to the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me. If I may, let me go ahead and sketch that meeting for next Tuesday. We set it on the eleventh.
Go right ahead.
At ten thirty a.m.
If that's okay with everybody on the committee, it's fine with me.
What time is it?
Ten thirty a.m.
That's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
At this time.
Alderman Steps. Did you say you have a meeting next Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I won't conflict?
No.
No. Okay. And if Ms. Parker don't have anything, then I'll call you. I'll be just counsel. That's probably a good support.
You said you were what, Development and Planning?
Ten o'clock, yeah.
Okay. At this time, we are going to listen to the legal department. And the legal department will be discussing the ramifications that's around, centered around the mayoral and alderman races that will take place, either take place or not take place. There are a lot of innuendos out there, and there's a lot of misinformation. So the legal department will clarify what they know about what's going on about the 2012 elections.
Well, there's been a lot in the press, but first of all, you need to understand that Arkansas law treats the election of executive offices and aldermen differently based on the population of the municipality. Population under fifty thousand is treated differently than the population over fifty thousand. Pine Bluff is the first city within my recollection that has experienced a decline in population from fifty thousand to under fifty thousand. And in that being the case, it means there's a difference of statutes which will govern herefore or hereafter our mayoral, clerk, and alderman elections. Now, these statutes we're talking about are not of recent vintage. In fact, most of them were enacted in the sixties and seventies. So it's nothing that's been done recently that was just uncovered. They've been on the books for a long time. Previously, for a city of more than fifty thousand, the mayoral election was during the presidential year, as was the clerk's election. We all know the city attorney's election is in the off year. And four aldermen are elected in the presidential election year. And then the other four aldermen who are on our council will be elected in the off year when the city attorney was elected. The statutes for cities under fifty thousand treat those positions differently. First, as regard to mayor's position, and the city clerk's position, and the city treasurer's position. All those are under the statutes to be in the off election year, which for our purposes means they would occur at the same time as the city attorney's race. All our executive positions, mayor through city attorney, would be in the off year elections, the non-presidential election. Under the statutes, our alderman or council positions are converted to two-year terms for all eight positions. They can be reestablished at four years, but only if the council refers to the voters to question at an election, which is either a special election call for that purpose or some general election, and the voters authorize four-year staggered terms such as we have now. The default setting, if you will, is for eight positions, each to have two-year terms, which means that everybody runs at the same time. The question is, when do those new statutes that would apply to us now, since we've fallen under fifty thousand, go into effect? Do they apply to this election? Or do they wait till 2014? And there's, there's not a lot of guidance on that. There is a statute which specifically addresses the issue of when a city was below fifty thousand and then grew to be more than fifty thousand. And that statute says that the mayor or clerk, the incumbent in the office, would hold over the additional time to put them on the correct schedule. There's no corresponding statute that speaks to the situation where you had more than fifty thousand, and now you have less than fifty thousand. You can infer from the statutes that the appropriate course of action is to go ahead and implement them. And in that case, you would have two options. You would either carry over the mayor and clerk and treasurer's positions for two more years to put them on the correct rotation for the new statutes. Or you'd have to have a two-year term for those positions. There's nothing in the law that actually addresses that you can have a two-year abbreviated term for those positions. You might say the most logical course is, if we are to apply the law as written, as applicable to the city at this time, based on our population, probably the most reasonable course is that those positions will hold over two years to put us on the correct rotation. It also would have the effect that the, of the council members who are up for election at this occasion will be running for two-year terms. Because the statute's very clear, for cities under fifty thousand, the members of the council are elected for two-year terms. In fact, there's, there's an argument to be made, I don't know who, no one's made it, and it would have to be decided by, you know, a higher authority than us, that all positions on the council should be up this time for two-year terms. If you read the statute as written. Now, whether or not a court would go along with that under the circumstances, that would be just speculating. We don't know. We are involved in, as I said, an unprecedented, in my memory, situation. And we're in a gray area where the statutory law actually doesn't address it specifically because I guess it never, was never contemplated that you would have this situation. We discussed who would, who would be the person to find out what the law is. From the city's perspective as a municipality, the legal interest of the city is simply that the law be followed, whatever that is. The candidates for office are actually the ones who we, who we say have an interest in the outcome. The city as a governmental body will carry on with whatever the law is and whoever is elected, or whoever holds over in the positions. The individuals involved, of course, are the ones who have a personal stake in the matter. And if they choose to challenge the prevailing situation, then they have a right to go to court and seek what we call a declaratory judgment, asking the judge to declare what the law is. And based on what the judge declares the law to be, then that, what would follow from there would be the action in the form of an injunction or an order for the election commission to act accordingly. Right now, the election commission has on the ballot the mayor's race, the clerk's race, and four alderman positions, and a city treasurer's race. Until someone goes to court and compels them to take those races off the ballot, then they'll stay on. And that raises another issue, which we would have to cross down the road. But for now, if a candidate for those offices wants to be sure that they should either continue to run as if there's going to be an election, or they can fold their tent and wait for two more years, they need to seek redress in the court system immediately because time is, as I say, a wastin'. But the city itself actually has nobody to sue. I mean, the city itself, what position will we take? Because any position we took would be against someone's interest involved in this race. And our position is basically, we just want to see the law fulfilled, whatever that is. We have an idea what it probably is. But until they put judge in front of my name, or in front of Ms. Scott's name, we're not the final authority. And if someone wanted to ask the Attorney General for an opinion, of course, that would be wonderful too. But he's not a judge either. And while his authority, his opinion carries great weight, and we would certainly appreciate hearing from him, this sort of situation cries out for a judicial determination. And that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you for that. Before we get into questions, Chief Howell had some diagrams of the new fire station. And are you going to be around when the council meeting is over?
No.
Okay. When the council meeting is over, if you all would like to look at those diagrams for the new fire station, you can. Now, are there any questions from the council to the legal department pertaining to what he just explained? If so, please be very brief, precise, and concise. We go to the council first, okay? Go ahead.
It's not necessarily a question. I'd just like for the reverend to show that we are municipal elected people. It is not our necessary responsibility to know the real law about elections. And I'm going to put that whole, I'm going to put this whole thing on our election commissions because they should have informed us. They should have known the law before. And he just made the statement that it's not something new. It's been on the books. So the people that's in charge of our voting should have known. We, we don't have the right to know. We shouldn't have known. I mean, through reading, we could have known, but it's not like our responsibility to know. They are the ones on the election commission. So they should have informed us. And I was reading in the paper the other day, and it said that they went to the last minute to vote us up, which is not true. The election commission should have informed us. They are the ones that does the drawing and the redistricting for each district. It's not, it's not the JVs, or the aldermen's, or the school board members, or anybody. It's the election commission. They're the one orchestrates the redistricting. And they should know the law before we, we just, we just do our job for the people. You know, it's not, it's not our responsibility to know the election laws, so, per se. It's okay to know, but per se, it's not, it's not our responsibility to know. Then they should have informed us of what we encountered when they found out that the population had dropped below fifty thousand. They should have known immediately. A red light should have gone off in their head so they could have told, and had a meeting to the elected officials. And that's the way I look at that. So I'd like for the reverend to show that I, I don't think it's, nobody has an estimate. I think it, the election commission should have told us.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Any more comments or questions from council members?
My question is to Joe, what is, what is the next step?
Well, right now, the status quo, which will continue, is that the mayor's race, the city clerk's race, and the city treasurer's race, and four alderman races are on the ballot for four-year terms. The election commission has indicated that they will not change anything unless they are told to by a court. So it's really up to an interested party, whoever has standing, to bring suit to first ask the court to say what the law is. Is it, and by that I mean, do the new, do the statutes which apply to cities under fifty thousand govern this election? In which case, it would seem there would be no election for mayor, city clerk, and city treasurer. They would hold over to the next election. Or do, or are these circumstances are so unique and peculiar that, okay, we should go ahead and have the election, but it'll only be for a two-year term? And in 2014, this process will start all over again? And also, at the same time, all eight city council members would be up for election in 2014? However, to do that, someone is going to have to step forward this time. Now, I don't know what, I assume that the election commission in 2014 would follow what the statutes are. They haven't been brought to their attention now. But it's just, a candidate obviously has, has interest. A citizen may have standing because arguably, it is an illegal exaction of city funds to pay for an election that the legally shouldn't have. But that, you know, that's just, that's just opinion on my part. As I said, really, it's one of those situations that is perfectly suited for the, a decision by a judge to decide what the, what the law should be in this situation. Obviously, it puts kind of a very burden on the candidates who have been running for a long time. And they, quicker it's decided, the easier it'll be for them to determine what they can do.
I have another question. When, when did we know this? And who knew it?
I don't, well, the law's been on the books for quite a while. I don't know.
But I mean, obviously, none of the candidates knew it because otherwise, we wouldn't have gone this far. So I'm saying, who discovered it on the books? And when?
You know, I don't know who discovered it on the books. Actually, first I heard of it was when I read about it in the newspaper. As to, I don't know who found out about it first. Apparently, there was a question posed by a private attorney in our office that started the ball rolling.
Okay. Are there other questions pertaining to this? We just wanted some clarification. What I get from the whole, whole thing, and this is just my commentary, that all of us need to be abreast of what's going on because all of us are affected. I understand that maybe the commission should have told us, the legal department should have told us. But I think each branch of government, the executive department, the legislative branch, and the judicial branch should keep up with what's going on. And hopefully, from, from now forward, we will be apprised of what's going on from our legal department, as well as from the municipal league, as well as the election commission. So if there's nothing else, we'll, anyone else?
May I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that the census will not be counted for another ten years, but after, hopefully, that the census will be going up in the meantime. But at the next ten years, when it's over fifty thousand, then what, does it go back?
Well, we hope that's the case. And if that happens, there are specific, there is a specific statute that governs that. And that's easy to follow.
Are there other?
So it just converges, so it just converge back to where it was?
It would revert back to where we are now.
Are there other questions? Yes.
I understand that you just said that you're not sure. So you're not, this is the first time anything like this has ever happened?
Well, of course, when these were passed, there weren't that many large cities in Arkansas. There was just Little Rock and Pine Bluff, and maybe North Little Rock were the only ones over fifty thousand. Of course, since then, we're talking about sixties and seventies, since then, of course, a lot of cities have gotten, have had to use the statutes which converted their election cycles based on the fact they exceeded fifty thousand. I mean, like a Fayetteville and Springdale and those places. I know of no other city in Arkansas that's had the experience of dropping below fifty thousand. So we are, as they say in the law, sui generis, I believe is the word, which means we're the first.
So my question is, and I don't know, I should know, because I've got some relatives there, Altona is way less than fifty thousand. Do they, do they choose their mayor every four years, or every two years?
Well, Altona is not a city of the first class. Now, don't confuse city of the first class.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah. They're a, they're a city of the second class, which, you know, to be a city of the first class, you only have to have twenty-five hundred or more. So we have more than twenty-five hundred, but Altona doesn't. They're, they're a city of the second class. And honestly, I don't know what the rules are for those cities. I have a hard enough time keeping up with ours.
I've wondered about that. I think they do four years for aldermen, four years for the mayor. I'm just, I'm just throwing this out to try and understand something.
Well, let me, let me clarify. The mayor's term, as well as the city clerk's, and the treasurer's, and the city attorney's will stay four years. It's just when you elect them will change. Right now, we elect the mayor, and the city clerk, and the treasurer in the presidential years. We elect the city attorney in what I call the off year, the governor's race, the Arkansas general election.
Also elect four aldermen.
Yeah. Elect four aldermen in each cycle.
Exactly.
That will change because under the rules for cities under fifty thousand, all executive elected officials and all members of the council are up for election in the same year. Well, all members of the council will be up every two years. All executive officials are up every four years. But that would have the effect of every four years, everybody would be up for election. Unless the council refers to the public, the option of extending council terms to four years, and the public votes to do so.
Sound the rest of it.
Okay. Okay. We appreciate all the questions, and appreciate you answering them. And I, I would like to see, I would like for each department head to research what ramifications come because we are under fifty thousand. There may be some other things that we are missing. Falling under fifty thousand may affect, may affect some federal funding, or it may affect other type funding. So I'd like to see all, I'd like to see all of the department heads research how becoming a class of the second class, I mean, becoming the first-class city under fifty thousand, how does that affect us? I think we should know that because something else may come up. And having said that, we'll now listen to the presentation of proposed ordinances and resolutions by Alderman Bill Brummett.
Madam Mayor, we're going to read these first four, just the titles, because we've already read them before.
Okay.
The first one we have is an ordinance to close the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenues up for the second reading.
An ordinance to close the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenues.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance to close a portion of Parker Avenue for the second reading.
An ordinance to close a portion of Parker Avenue.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance to close part of Cottonwood Street and all of Cottonwood Circle up for the second reading.
An ordinance to close part of Cottonwood Street and all of Cottonwood Circle.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance to close part of North Bell Air, South Bell Air, West Bell Air, and Bell Mead Drives up for the second reading.
An ordinance to close part of North Bell Air, South Bell Air, West Bell Air, Bell Mead, and Bell Mead Drives.
Place it on the calendar. We have an ordinance amending section twenty-nine days two and twenty-nine days sixty-three to the ordinance of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, respecting fencing and screening requirements for auto, salvage, wrecking, or junk yards. Establishing a grace period for such establishments to come into compliance with city regulations and providing for a penalty for violations up for the first reading.
Whereas many salvage and wrecking yards in the city are not in compliance with the requirements of section twenty-nine sixty-three of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Pine Bluff as regards to the fencing required for such establishments in the zone they are located. And whereas the council believes that increasing the penalty for, for a violation of this code section is warranted. code section is warranted to encourage compliance. And whereas the council believes the grace period for operators to bring their facility into compliance should be provided before the enhanced penalty is imposed. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, section one, section 29 dash two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to replace the definition of automobile salvage yard with the following definition. Automobile salvage, wrecking, or junkyard means any establishment or place of business that is maintained, used, or operated for the storing, keeping, buying, or selling of five or more inoperative wrecked, scrapped, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles of any of the parts thereof, as well as any site where waste, material, or other machinery is collected, stored, salvaged, or sold. Section two. The first paragraph of section 29 dash 63A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to read as follows. Automobile salvage, wrecking, and junkyard, or junkyard means any establishment or place of business that is maintained, used, or operated for storing, keeping, buying, buying or selling five or more, is that the same one? Five or more inoperative wrecked, scrapped, ruined, or dismantled motor vehicles of any, is that the same one? Okay, all right. Or dismantled motor vehicles, any parts thereof, as well as any site where waste, material, or other machinery is collected, stored, or salvaged or sold. The interior area of any automobile salvage, wrecking, or junkyard in existence in any zone of the city shall be screened from view by fencing as set forth below. Section three. Section 29 dash 63 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, is amended to add the following, as, following as subsection B. Penalty. An automobile salvage, wrecking, or junkyard shall comply with the applicable fencing and screening requirements of this section and any other applicable fencing or screening regulations imposed by this part 29 for the zone in which the establishment is located. A yard not in compliance with the applicable requirements of this section or other applicable requirements must come into compliance no later than 300 days from January 1st, 2013. If the automobile salvage, wrecking, or junkyard is not fully compliant by the end of the 300-day grace period, the yard, the yard operator or owner thereof shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than 500 nor more of $1,000, or incarceration in the, in the Jefferson County Detention Center for no more than 10 days, or both a fine and incarceration within the prescribed parameters. Each day, the, each day the automobile salvage, wrecking, or junkyard is not, noncompliant shall constitute a discreet and separate offense for the purpose, purposes of this penalty. Further, the city council may declare the yard which is noncompliant as of January 1st, 2013, a public nuisance and order its abatement. Section four. In the event any section or part of this ordinance shall be deemed into conflict with provisions of ACA sections 27, 74401 of the provisions of the state law, said state law shall govern.
That ordinance will be sent to the Planning and Development Committee. Six, we have an ordinance providing for rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. This one's for a reading.
Whereas the city of, whereas the City of Pine Bluff Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 28, 2012, as provided for in section six, act 186 of the statutes of the State of Arkansas, for the purpose which was to hear any and all persons interested in amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff by providing the rezoning of certain property. And whereas it has been expressly stated by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff that the zoning ordinance should be amended to provide for the rezoning of said property. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the following described property be and the same is hereby established and defined residential planned unit development for all future purposes as set, set forth and defined in the zoning ordinance.
The legal description follows.
And the legal description follows. Section two. All ordinances and parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
That ordinance is also referred to the Planning and Development Committee. We have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenues in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Would you like me to read all four of them at the same time?
No, just start.
Okay. All right. Whereas a petition.
Adoption.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing the alley located between Cherry and Linden Streets and Seventh and Eighth Avenues in the City of Pine Bluff. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. And we have seven ayes.
We have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing a portion of Parker Avenue in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas a petition.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on the closing of a portion of Cottonwood Street and Cottonwood Circle in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Any discussion?
What we just did was Parker, had Parker Avenue.
Oh, number eight? Okay. All right. So we have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish a notice of a public hearing on closing a portion of Parker Avenue in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. Seven, zero.
We have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing a portion of Cottonwood Street and Cottonwood Circle in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas a petition.
Motion and a second to, on the resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing a proportion of Cottonwood Street and Cottonwood Circle in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. Seven, zero.
Mayor, we have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing a portion of North Bell Air Drive, all of West Bell Air Drive, a portion of Bell Me Drive, a portion of South Bell Air in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas a petition was.
We have a motion and a second, a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing of a portion of North Bell Air Drive, all of West Bell Air Drive, a portion of Bell Me Drive, a portion of South Bell Air Drive in the City of Pine Bluff. Do we have any discussion on the resolution? Hearing no discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. Seven, zero.
Number 11 was pulled by the sponsor, so we'll move on to number 12. We have a resolution providing for placement of cost of correcting certain nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such.
Whereas AC.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution providing for placement of cost for correcting certain nuisances on tax books as delinquent taxes and collected as such. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing no discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose say no. Did you say no? All right, so, okay, so it's seven, zero.
Mayor, we have a resolution expressing the commitment of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to provide the city's match for improved traffic signals at the intersection of Martha Mitchell Expressway and Hutchinson and Bryant Street, and to maintain said system once installed.
Whereas the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department has determined that an upgrade to the traffic signals at the intersections of the Martha Mitchell Expressway, US Highway 65B, and Hutchinson and Bryant Streets is justified. And whereas, the anticipated cost of the project is $437,000, of which 80% is eligible for federal aid, 10% is shared by the State of Arkansas, and the city, the city's responsible, responsibility for 10% of said cost, or $43,700. And whereas, it is desire of the city council to commit to provide the city's share of the project cost, and to the city maintaining the signals once the upgrade is completed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the City of Pine Bluff hereby commits to the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department that the city will provide its, its proportionate share of the cost of upgrading the signals at the intersections of Martha Mitchell Expressway and Hutchinson and Bryant Streets, and share the anticipated $43,700, it being understood that the city will be responsible for 100% of the costs which exceed the total anticipated cost of the project. Further, the city commits to providing power and maintaining the signals once the upgrades have been completed.
Has this been to a committee?
Move for adoption.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution expressing the commitment of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to provide the city's match for improved traffic signals at the intersection of Martha Mitchell Expressway and Hutchinson and Bryant Streets to maintain the said system once installed. Now we're ready for discussion. Any discussion?
Has it been to a committee?
I have no idea.
Who would answer?
The question is, has it been to the committee?
Is this a presentation that we do out of?
Not really.
I mean, this is like, it's clear by expression, but this is like the airport. This is like words.
Okay, there, okay, there is an attachment to it. But if, 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 if it is the council's desire for it to go to the committee, that's where it'll go. But it has an attachment to the resolution.
I didn't see, I didn't see.
I need to make a motion for it to go to the committee.
Okay.
I make a motion to go to the committee.
I think the timing of it's pretty important, though.
I didn't see the deadline in here, though.
This, this, this attachment back here says about the federal aid state and the city, and the maximum amount for traffic signal projects. And if it exceeds the maximum amount, the city will be responsible for 100% of the additional cost.
That's in the resolution.
It's 80, 10, 10, it's 80.
No, no, no.
So if it goes below, so if it goes over, anything over 437,000, no matter what it is, we're responsible for.
Professionally, I don't think they would have given us an estimate if it was going to be over that anyway.
But I don't, I don't think that they would have made sure that we referred to this resolution, so we would know where we was.
I understand, but I also want to say that it is our responsibility, and we're getting state aid, I think we need to take, we need to take, you know, that into consideration, and jump on it, because they're giving us state aid. Right now, we're, we're only responsible for 43,000.
Right now.
Line 18 through, 18 through 21, explain.
Right, Joe?
Okay. Okay, at this point, at this point, okay, go ahead.
Is there a deadline on the, get the data?
Well, you know, honestly, I don't know. J.T. Golden, the street department director, contacted me last week and asked me to get a resolution together for this matching funding, and then he provided me the attachments, which I provided to the city attorney's office, and, you know, Joe Childers of the city attorney put the resolution together. And looking at, there's an email from the highway department that indicated that they hadn't heard back from the city about whether we wanted to proceed with the project. It was originally brought forward to the city back in May of 11, and, you know, asking that we give them a decision. And that's really what Mr. Golden wanted to see happen, you know, that we bring the resolution forward and make a decision. The street department did indicate that they thought this was the best project that the highway department had before us, and it is a 10% city match. There is federal funding involved, and it's not stated in any of the memos whether there's a time limit on there, but, but there may be. As regard to the points about if, you know, the project exceeds the scope, then the city's responsible, I have seen that in highway department projects before. That, that language there, I think, is fairly standard. It also indicates that now, this $437,000 project is beyond the scope of what can be funded in a single federal project. So in actuality, it's going to have to be broken up, and we may end up with a smaller project and a smaller match. So that's really what I know about it, if there are any questions.
You're saying it could be pieces, it could be?
Yeah, it prob, it sounds like it's going to have to be broken down into like two projects at least, and, 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 and hopefully, get all this done, and maybe the same amount, but within, you know, two, two different projects. But obviously, the highway department can't go forward without the city's approval.
Is this the same type of resolution that is customary for lights on the express?
Yes, Ms. Walker, every year, we budget an amount for state highway match. Jerry George usually leads us in determining that amount. We do have $70,000 that carried over from prior years of unused budget for highway match, and we also have about $65,000 left in the bond money from the 2011 bond issue that was for, you know, highway match projects. There is funding available for the 43,000.
Okay. I recall of us having matches, but not to, I don't recall this part of the city goes over the responsible ability to rest 100% on the city. And they would seem to indicate that they wanted to make sure that we understood that.
Yes.
With reference to that.
Yeah, they, clearly, they do want us to understand, and I do recall seeing it on at least one other instance on a highway project where that language was in there.
And those intersections do need to upgrade. And I can see it's 80, 10, 10. It's federal, 10% state, 10% city. And you go down through that ninth, crossing over into Fourth Ward. And, and, you know, I'm just saying, it needs to be upgraded like the rest of them.
Okay.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we act on this tonight.
Okay, we have, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a substitute motion that we act on this tonight.
I don't think Ms. Walker had a second on her motion.
Okay, okay, well, let's go back to your motion. What was your motion, Mrs. Walker?
I motioned that we send it to committee.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, the motion dies for the lack of a second. Now, the original motion, what'd you say, a substitute motion?
I motioned that we act on this tonight.
Reason for that motion, because we're going to fix it to death.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, so now we are voting on 13. We're voting on a resolution expressing the commitment of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to provide the city's match for improved traffic signals at the intersection of Martha Mitchell Expressway and Hutchinson and Bryant Streets and to maintain the said system. Any more discussion?
It's amazing to me that this correspondence was May 20, 2011. And they said that, you know, the city's desire to pursue this work. The next thing I see and hear is for June 14th of this year, last year, the state agreed da, 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 and now they're asking, are you still interested in it? So 13 months later, we're getting another email, we're getting emails wanting to know about it, and then on August, August 22nd, then we get a letter back from them saying that they think we are still in, so I don't, I don't know the, I don't know what the hurry is, but it doesn't say anywhere in there anything about. But it's just interesting that it, May 11, or May 2011 was when it started, and then we had to ask in June, June 14th of this year, whether we were still interested or not, so I don't see, I don't fail to see any hurry in it, but anyway.
Thank you for answering your own question, Bill. It was 2011, now it's 2012. I think you really did answer your own question.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It said, should the city desire to pursue this work, a copy of a sample resolution is enclosed after the resolution is passed and signed. And I didn't, is this the sample resolution that they sent? Or is this our own resolution?
This is ours. I don't know what happened to the sample. It never made it to our office. It may have been in this place that we had to do our own.
But, but see, you know, since they referred to a sample resolution, I think it's embarrassing that we know what it said.
Well, I, I would imagine. Well, I, I would imagine that the sample resolution was just a, a form to go by.
Yes, a formality.
I, I just, the reason I said it, you know, I felt that it may be important because, you know, if we were going to do it, unless it was something specific in the resolution, we didn't need them to tell us how to write a resolution, so I felt it must have been something in there specific that we needed to go by, but, you know, but I'm done.
Any other discussion? Here are no other discussion, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, let's call a roll.
Call a roll. Altemon Wyman?
Aye.
Altemon Easton?
Aye.
Excuse me?
He said aye.
Altemon Stell?
Aye.
Altemon Walker?
No.
Altemon Boyd?
Aye.
Altemon Brown?
Aye.
Altemon May?
Aye.
Okay, six one, so it passes, two-thirds. Are we ready to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, I know there will be no discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those that oppose say no. Okay.